All right, so it's seven o'clock. And looks like all the members are here, so I'll start the meeting. I'm going to open the meeting. So this is for our August 11th, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting. As a preliminary matter, I, this is Justine St. John, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chris?
We're here.
Oh, look at that.
Oh.
How cute.
That's very adorable. Armand?
Here.
David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Here.
And I am here as well. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. And it'll be Greg Johnson?
Here.
Megan Zamudo? And I also see Cheryl Kane and Mike Guzzo and Justin DiMarco on as well. And Mike, Chief Noble?
Yeah, we're here.
Excellent. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the media, all of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on Board Docs. And we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs unless I note otherwise. Just as a side note, I know that there are people who, who listen in, who might not know how to get to Board Docs. If you go to the town site, you go to the Board of Selectmen, uh, meeting date for today, you go to the agenda and the packet. When you click on the packet, that will bring you to Board Docs and you can follow along. Just as a note. So we're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items of public comment, after the members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. And once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting tonight will be conducted by a roll call vote. So that is that. So moving on to the next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anybody have any public comments for this evening? Okay. So we will move on to item number two. And that is the motion to authorize borrowing of $230,000 to partially cover the replacement of the roof at the Green Meadow School and authorize $2,670,000 of refunding of existing bonds and the authorized, the use of the digital signatures if it's approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. And Greg?
Well, I'll just do a quick intro, um, just as a refresher to the board, but then Cheryl Kane, the Treasurer Collector, or Mike Guzzo, the Finance Director, can fill in, only in that it's pretty straightforward. Last, last Selectmen meeting, um, the Board had already approved for, for the financing, so that, you know, authorizing the borrowing of, of a certain amount of money, I think $230,000 was the, was the amount so that we could, you know, pay for the reconstruction, the replacement of the roof of Green Meadow School. But, um, the finance team, so Cheryl, Mike, and others, as we're going into selling the bonds tomorrow, they, they recognize it could be a good time to refinance our existing so that we can get, you know, you know, a little bit of savings when you refinance. It's just similar to like a mortgage and whatnot. But am I inaccurate, Cheryl? Or is there anything else or Mike you want to add?
No, that really covers it, Greg. Um, we're refinancing $2,670,000. So we should get a better rate because the rates are at an all-time low. So, yeah, just seems like a good idea to do it now. We'll find out tomorrow how much we're really going to save.
Yep.
I'm assuming, sorry, this is David Gavin. I'm assuming from the summary that's in here, given that we'll see at least a little bit of savings in the water and sewer side, that the bonds that we are, refinancing, lack of a better phrase, include some water and sewer in that there must be, so we're doing a group of different bonds that, are they for longer terms? Are they for just a better rate? What's the deal?
So it's not for a longer term, Dave. We're keeping the same terms. Most of these are only going out another eight years. So we're, we're going to recognize some savings over the next eight years. Two of them are for water and sewer. And then we have another five that are for, um, the police stations, school boilers, petroleum remediation, landfill remediation, and winter street. So it's a little bit of a lot of things.
Are those boilers still eight years out?
Yeah, I'm afraid so.
Wow.
Actually, it's seven. Sorry, it's seven years out.
Boilers have been around a while.
Yeah, they were supposed to be used in the new high school when, uh, when they were posed, so.
They're still boiling.
So.
All right. Thank you, Cheryl.
So Cheryl, I did also want to thank you and Mike for, for going through this. And, um, and it just goes to show that, that you all are looking out, obviously, for the best interest of the town and that you're trying to, uh, save money when you, when you see it. And, uh, and so I really appreciate the fact that, that you all put so much hard work into this.
Thank you, Justine.
Anybody else have any questions for Cheryl or Mike or Greg regarding this before we call a vote? Nope? All right. So the motion to authorize the borrowing, uh, Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So thank you very much. All right. Next, we are going to move to item three on the agenda, which is, um, an introduction to the finalist, uh, for candidacy for the new Deputy Chief position, Deputy Chief of Police position. Greg?
All right, actually, I'll let Chief Noble. Chief Noble, do you want to do the introduction?
Sure. Uh, I'll just give a quick overview of how we came to the process and how we came to the position. Prior to this, about three years ago, uh, it was brought up, uh, to have a Deputy Chief replace the old Lieutenant's position as the number two because of several conflicts of interest, both for and against. Um, you know, they have to do internal investigations, they have to do that. But they also make management and policy decisions where the union, in a union meeting, they can't divulge any of that information. So there's several conflicts of interest. This position pulls, uh, the Deputy Chief, uh, comes out of a union position and becomes a salary position. Uh, secondly, because it's a salary position, there's no overtime. Uh, there's no additional personnel. There's no additional, uh, this. And it actually, uh, should work out to be a cost savings because of the costs that of overtime for the Lieutenant's position. So when, uh, Chief DeBois left, you know, uh, we had discussed it, the Board had. And it was determined that Deputy Chief route is a better route, both for efficiency, for, uh, to settle any conflict of interest, so there won't be a conflict of interest. And so, uh, you know, any, any kind of, uh, executive or command management decisions can be, uh, said and there won't be, uh, an issue with any union personnel or it won't be considered biased if any investigation. Uh, so in April, we put out for a Deputy Chief position. Uh, we got 21, uh, resumes and letters. Uh, we narrowed it down to four interviews. That got narrowed down to two. Uh, one of the ones were drawn. And Chris was a standout, uh, in the interviews and his resume. He's local. Uh, Chris Triano goes on right now. He's local. He actually started, I remember when he was a special on in Maynard. So he actually started in Maynard back in 1996. His police career started here and it's come full circle. So, uh, Chris, uh, absolutely was standout. He knows, uh, the police. Uh, his background investigation is, is basically completed except a couple of last checks, but, uh, people couldn't say enough good things about him. Uh, that comes from, uh, the townspeople over in Concord, references to, uh, other people we spoke with in, uh, the surrounding agencies. So. Uh, and that's where we are. And this is more of a meeting to introduce Chris to the Board and, uh, if the Board has any questions.
Okay, so, uh, welcome, Chris. How are you?
Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So I'll say full disclosure, I, I actually did work with Chris back in 19, probably 1996, 1997, when he was, uh, when he was first hired in Concord after that. Um, but we haven't worked together in a very, very long time. Um, does anyone else have any questions, uh, for Chris? Or would you like, Chris, would you like to say a few things first?
Yeah, that would be the right thing.
Sure, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Well, first of all, I obviously appreciate the, uh, the opportunity to come on tonight, um, make some time for me to come out. So I, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Inviting me to this like board meeting. As Chief Noble said, my, my career started in 1996 in Maynard, kind of come full circle now. So, been a police officer in Concord for 23 years. I was promoted to Sergeant 2011, promoted to Lieutenant in 2018. I currently oversee the Support Services Division in Concord right now, which is, um, majority of my, my duties are overseeing the Criminal Investigation Division. But I also oversee the School Resource Officers, as well as our Public Records Division, and our Public Safety Dispatch Center as well. Prior to being in Support Services, I was the Patrol Division Commander's Lieutenant, over for all of the Uniform Patrol Operations. Throughout my career, I've just kind of, uh, really focused on career development for myself, through certifications and training, and I've really encouraged other officers as well to do the same thing. Which kind of led me to where I am today. But Maynard was an excellent opportunity. Police Department has an excellent reputation. Um, just being in a neighboring community, we've worked, um, numerous times with the Maynard Police Department. Very familiar with them. Um, again, having lived in Maynard, worked as a, uh, Special Police Officer in Maynard, and then having a, having a career in a neighboring community as well. Um, very, very respected Police Department. I'm very excited to have the opportunity to, uh, to come work here. I think I can bring some, uh, some good fresh outside ideas. I'm a good listener and, uh, I'm all ears to, uh, to kind of continue on the vision the Chief Noble has, moving the department forward. And, uh, very much like to be a part of that vision and not continue movement upon the way it should be.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, does anyone have a question for, uh, Chris?
I do. Uh, welcome, Chris. Good to see you. Um, nice to talk with you. First off, I guess it's a sort of a protocol question. I know my, my father was a Lieutenant Colonel in the Army and, you know, people didn't refer to him necessarily as Lieutenant Colonel, but referred to him as Colonel. So I'm wondering, does a Deputy Chief get called Chief?
I would say it would be called Deputy.
Yeah, but that, that's too much like Barney Fife. So I don't, I wanted to. Uh, what, what Chief, what do you want?
I, I never even thought of it, Dave. Deputy Chief, yeah. Yeah, I, you're right, because most people shorten down, you know, the Lieutenant is LT and something like that, so.
Well, Lieutenant is, Lieutenant Colonel would be a Colonel in the Army, but I don't know, and, you know, I don't want to, reason for asking is I don't want to offend anybody. So that's, that's the issue. I mean, is it Deputy Chief? That seems too long and, but anyway, we'll, we'll talk about that.
1A. Go with 1A.
So, so 1A. Have you had an opportunity other than as a special, um, to work with the Maynard Police Department on any particular issues as time has gone on? And what has been your experience in working with the Maynard Police Department as an outsider?
Again, so it's, uh, my experience has always been very good, uh, as a patrol officer. You know, there's been, there's been times where we've had to interact as patrols with other patrol officers in the Maynard Police Department. Uh, more so recently as the Lieutenant in charge of the, our Criminal Investigation Division. Um, having worked with, with Maynard Police Department and their offices, uh, detective as well, on, uh, on some recent cases. And it, of course, been nothing but positive. It has a very well-respected, uh, reputation as they should, because they, uh, they put out excellent service. The area departments work very well with them.
Do you think there'd be much of a difference in, um, the amount of, of activity, given that Concord might be a larger town with maybe, I don't know, but maybe a little more police action than, than Maynard? Or, or not? Perhaps you can fill me in on that. Do you think Maynard's more active with police work or is Concord?
Um, I think it would be, I think it would be very similar. Concord is obviously land-wise, um, much larger. Population-wise, I think there's maybe about eight to nine thousand more residents in Concord. Um, so not an overwhelming number. But as far as policing goes, I, I, I think the styles are very similar. A very community-oriented Police Department where I came from in Concord. Same thing with the Maynard Police Department. Continuing that very proactive, proactive Police Department as well. Um, I think those are things are very similar.
Good. Well, again, welcome. Uh, I'd, I'd like to have an opportunity to meet, to, uh, speak with you personally and, and hopefully, maybe the Chief can set me up so I can have a conversation, um, you know, offline, just to, uh, have a few words. But welcome to Maynard. Looking forward to, to getting to know you a little bit and, and, uh, working with you as much as the Board works with our, uh, our 1A. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Just, just to elaborate on that too, there are several things that we work with Concord on, like they were part of the C4RJ, which is Communities for Restorative Justice. Uh, we're also involved in our domestic violence program that encompasses both Maynard, Concord, and 20 other towns. There's several of those collaborations, the, uh, Federal Mass Police Partnership, which we, uh, share like the, um, our jail diversion program with, with Concord that, uh, Chris is well familiar with coming over here. He'll, he'll be able to, uh, jump right into that because he knows what that's all about. So that's very helpful, having, uh, somebody from a close agency, in an agency that we're already involved in, in those aspects.
And if I miss this, Chris, what town did you grow up in?
I grew up in Burlington.
Okay.
So I got a quick question, Chris. Um, this is Armand, by the way. One of the things that obviously you, uh, this is a, a brand-new role that's been created. We never had this, you know, this, uh, role, or, or I should say title in this, uh, you know, in this town. What most excites you about this opportunity? And how, how do you think it's, you have, you're going to have an impact on our town?
Sure. I, I think the exciting thing is the, the growth of the department itself. Um, a lot of hires and promotions. And really, the department's growing. Um, some, some newer officers coming in and, you know, I'm excited to be a part of that. We went through a similar situation in Concord not so long ago. We had some turnover. We, we hired a lot of officers. It can be overwhelming for a department. Um, you know, with, with field training and things like that, but we're able to manage it, no problem. And I think it's, I think it's a very good thing for a Police Department and it's a good thing for the community.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
My understanding, Chief Noble, is we're not growing, but we're seeing a lot of changeover from retiring officers into new officers. That's.
That's correct. Uh, officers that have been on, you know, 36, 32, and 20 years have retired, you know, are retiring. So, that's it. Uh, that's the real turnover and obviously Chief DeBois leaving.
Little opportunity to shake.
Correct.
Nice to meet you, Chris. I had a question. Um, what do you think a local Police Department like Maynard's, uh, should be doing? Or where do you think opportunities for improvement exist, uh, given the Black Lives Matter movement, all the conversation around the police? Uh, especially this year since the George Floyd murder. Um, I would, I just would love to hear your thoughts and, you know, feel free to touch nationally and at the state level. But what do you think really kind of at the local level where we're often feel a little, um, in a bubble from that situation? Although I, I don't think we accurately are. Um, what do you think that we have an opportunity to do here for that?
Uh, so I think we have an opportunity to embrace some of those ideas. I think, uh, being complacent sometimes can be, can be detrimental to any profession. And, um, you know, as, as police and ourselves, we, we absolutely can improve on things and we should be looking to improve always. You know, the minute we stop looking to, to improve as a perfectionist, is, is, you know, where we can get, we can get caught a little bit. So I think being open to ideas and open to, open to, uh, to change and making ourselves better is the first step, having that open mind. Um, and that collaboration partnership with the community as well, open lines of communication. I come from, from the department where that, that's really, it's really pushed us to be a part of the community. And I think, uh, having those open lines of communication with the community really helps foster those relationships. And it makes it a little easier to, to come to the table when, when we have to have those conversations, when you're already part of the community.
Any, anything specific that you've seen that's worked or a little bit more detailed than just opening a line of communication? Obviously, very important.
Yeah, sure. It's, uh, we've done the, uh, we've done, uh, the Citizens Police Academies. We really encourage our officers to, uh, to get out and do park and walks, you know, and, and go into downtown businesses and speak with people. Um, we've invited them to conversations. We've allowed them to, to make ourselves available. Because sometimes I think, uh, citizens, you know, sometimes feel that the police aren't always available for conversations. So we really put ourselves out there. And, uh, it's a tough situation sometimes to put yourself out there, but it's, it's what we need to do to allow those conversations to happen. So having those meetings, uh, having an open house at the police station or, or sponsoring a, a youth academy or, or an adult police academy, which we have, encouraging officers to be out of their cruises and walk in the downtown, talking to business owners, being out in the business district, really, really opens up that line of communication. Thank you.
Actually, I got a follow-up question to that, uh, to Jeff's question, because I, you just touched upon something that I think we're missing, uh, for a long time. We do have a downtown and, um, obviously it's important that you have that, you know, relationship with, with the patrolman in town and, uh, you know, it's important that every once in a while, the patrolmen do get out of their vehicles and, and kind of walk around town so they get to know the, um, uh, business owners and have that relationship so they could understand what's going on on a ground level. And that's really important. And that, in my opinion, hasn't happened as much as it should happen. And this is no knock on anybody, but that's, uh, that, that is crucial, in my opinion, in developing community relationships. Uh, and business owners have the, you know, eyes and ears of, of the community a lot of times. So it's important to get to know the people in downtown.
And did we just lose Chris?
I think, yeah. Armand, just to speak to that, I, I, because with Kyle Nyholm's retirement, you will be getting shortly that I have realigned that position to, uh, that, the, the new title of that position. Is Community Officer, where he has to go downtown for at least one to two hours a day. And he'll be the liaison to the Business District Downtown. And also, he'll have to then go up to, with the new, uh, you know, uh, 129, uh, Parker Street.
Yes.
To get involved in, in those businesses. So, uh, that, there is a position created, uh, that, uh, once all the, the new, uh, the positions are filled, that position would be, uh, would be filled probably sometime late October. Will be.
Very good. Yeah, thank you. Very good.
I would think that, um, Concord with their downtown probably has a very similar, uh, approach relative to having their officers stop in, to their businesses, because they have a walkable downtown. And that's important to their tourist issues, um, as well.
When Chris gets back on, yes, we, we have talked about the similarities of our downtown and their downtown. They are parking, um, you know, enforcement, but also, you know, not to discourage, but more to, uh, get people to move on. So, you know, um, not people getting in there. So we have a lot of similar issues in that way, yes. There's, obviously, is a lot more historical that people are look, you know, so, you know, so they get that. But, uh, the same, same type of thing though, so people can, the turnover is good, uh, in the parking situation and that. Yeah.
Does Concord even have meters? I don't, I'm trying to think when I go down there. I don't.
Yeah, they, they have a, yeah, yeah, they have a, that's one of their challenges too. They don't want to go too far, uh, with their citations, but they also have to keep, you know, the, uh, the parking moving, you know, like, so people don't stay too long. So people, other people visiting don't get discouraged.
Yeah, don't forget, don't forget, West Concord is also part of that, so.
That's true too.
Yeah, yeah.
They used to have, I don't know if they still do, but they used to have a, that was, they had a sector. That was one of the sectors was the meter officer. So every day you had meter enforcement daily, so.
They've had a couple of challenges to their, uh, their meters and everything. And we, we had, um, I don't know if you guys remember, David, you might remember. We had a gentleman from Concord that approached Maynard with his ideas for Concord, that he wanted, he wanted to, um, bring us to Maynard to, you know, eliminate the meters and everything. I don't know if you remember him. He, he didn't, he didn't get it done in Concord, but he brought it to us, um, to try, because he started shopping in downtown Maynard because he was fed up with the meters in Concord. So then he got, tried to get us to get rid of our meters, but I don't know that he's still, I know he's still fighting them. I still see it in the, uh, the, you know, the local paper over there. I have a chance to stop in there in the morning. But we always have a policeman downtown walking around, like, from like nine o'clock till like three o'clock.
Well, Armand, Armand, you must have made a great impression on him. He's gone.
Absolutely, yeah.
I, I, I am texting him, but he says it's, it won't let me join back in. So he's, he is trying to get back.
I don't know why it's, it's letting him, it's, it's kicked him out.
Yeah. Somebody.
Well.
I just, just for, I don't know, not that it matters, because we're kind of past the point, but the, um, I, you know, as you guys all know, I, I, I've had the opportunity for the past several years to sit in on, um, well, I don't know, how many interviews have I sat in on now, Mike? It's been a lot.
Been a lot, yeah.
This was one of them and, um, and I can tell you that the, we had people from outside of Maynard and outside of our own department that all sat in on the process. And, um, everybody in the room, everybody in the room was highly impressed with, um, this, this particular gentleman. You know, in that, in that process, throughout the process, so just.
He's back.
But I have a question for him. I'm not going to chase him away, though.
He's still connecting.
Connecting, hold on. We'll get there. Hi, Chris. Good, good, it's good to see you again.
You're on mute, Chris.
You're on mute again.
There you go.
I lost the connection. I don't know what happened.
I have a question. And having, um, I was just kind of, you know, telling everybody that, um, what the opinions were after we sat through the interview process, which, you know, I don't know if you remember that was part of. But in, in saying that, I'm kind of following up on something that Armand said. And during the process, is there anything during the process that, you know, excited you to the, to the point, you know, in the sense that it excited you because it told you you had made the right decision in, in pursuing this opportunity in Maynard?
Yeah, like, the conversation with Chief Noble, and I, I had told him, it was, it's, it was a tough decision at first, uh, you know, coming out of my comfort zone a little bit and, and from Concord, applying for another position, leaving a job that I really liked. You know, I'm really happy with my job now, but coming out of my comfort zone and I saw this challenge and opportunity, to, uh, an opportunity for me to, to join a very well-respected, like department and also advance my career. You know, I was very excited for that opportunity. I told Chief Noble, like, you know, sometimes you got to come out of your comfort zone a little bit and challenge yourself. And that's why I found, especially with this being a new position, um, where it hasn't really been established yet. Um, and that kind of excited me too, to kind of get into a new position, work with Chief Noble and just, uh, continue to move forward.
Thanks.
Chief O'Connor is, uh, very supportive of, of Chris, when I talked to him about, uh, about it, you know. Being a neighboring town, um, sometimes, you know, poaching other people's talent is, is not always, uh, seen as good. But he was very supportive, wanting to him to further his career, uh, knowing, knowing how good he, uh, a person and professional he is.
Excellent. Does, uh, anybody else have any questions for Chris before we wrap up? No? All right. So, um, thank you for, for coming on, Chris. It's a little bit unconventional, but again, the position's brand new. So we're all kind of figuring it all out ourselves. Um, but appreciate the opportunity to see you again and for everyone else to meet you. And I believe that we'll all be in touch soon.
Thank you very much. Nice meeting everybody. I appreciate the opportunity.
Nice to meet you, Chris. Take care.
Thank you.
All right. So, thank you, Chief. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Um, so now we're going to move on to number four, which is, uh, in regards to the special town meeting. And it is the motion to accept and approve and forward to the Finance Committee for Recommendation and Comments Draft Control F, which is the Town General Fund, amend the Town General Fund budget. Which is the Town General Fund amend the Town General Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 21. We did. Include draft controls for the fire station capital stabilization and feasibility study in the event that anyone wanted to. Comment on that. We did have a lot of deliberation last week. But we also recognize that people might not have realized that it was kind of buried. It was buried in the in the body of the agenda. So if if there are comments about those, I'll absolutely entertain those as well. But I will start with Greg to introduce the draft control F, which I think we've seen before, but. Continue on, sir.
Yeah, very good. So. So the board had already accepted the other articles for forwarding either to the planning board if it's zoning related or to Finance Committee otherwise. Eventually, all the all the articles will go to the Finance Committee for their recommendation or otherwise and their comments as well. So with one exception, all the other articles were forwarded, and this was the FY21 proposed revised budget. And my my revision did change admittedly within the last two weeks, but I I this has not changed the selectmen's meeting on the fourth, which is. To make up for the projected shortfall we have because of. An expectation we'll have less revenue from local receipts, meals, tax, excise taxes, otherwise. Again, those are conservative estimates, but to solve for that. I recommend budget reductions, budget cuts. And from both the town and the school side, and then and a and a ratio between the town and the school side. Originally, I had also proposed a withdrawal from general stabilization to. Supplement the fluctuation or, you know, like basically to to help address the shortfall. But I changed my proposal because one of the larger uncertainties. For revenue, which was state aid, we was is reported from from the State House that we will get level funded from. Last year's state aid, which is what we budgeted for. But I didn't. I didn't change my proposal when it came to the budget reductions and budget cuts. So that so that's where we stand.
Okay. Sounds fair. Does do I? Anybody have any questions? Any board members have any questions, comments regarding this article? I don't. All right. Anybody else have any questions regarding this article? Lydia?
Is this? A good time for me to tell you what our statement is? I didn't. We just finalized it and I can send it to you now. Or I can weigh in verbally.
Okay, so are you? So you can absolutely talk about it, but typically we need at least 24 to 48 hours to consider something before we're going to vote on it. So I mean, we can. We can listen to the statement, but I'm not necessarily sure what. What action we can take on it.
Also, if you read the statement aloud, then we can include it as minutes, just as a.
That's true.
Okay, so it but it. This is the appropriate time for that. I'm sorry, we just finalized it. We had. Because when you guys had your meeting, I think it was assumed that we were going to discuss it on Thursday this. Last week, the sixth, and that because it wasn't part of our agenda, we could do that. And it was. A more complicated discussion than I think perhaps you guys thought that it might be. And so we had to schedule a separate meeting just to discuss this. And then, given the 48 hour rule. And trying to find a time when all of us could meet to at least get a quorum, we weren't able to meet until this morning. So.
Okay.
That is why. All right. And I can then forward the statement to you and the supporting financial document. So this is Brian Haas Superintendent wrote this this afternoon. Given the extenuating circumstances due to COVID, we are requesting budgetary relief of the 265,422. School portion of the town shortfall. We have an incredible incredible amount of additional health and safety protocols to put into place to keep our school community safe. In addition to the changing educational program available to all students. We have attached a spreadsheet that identifies expenses this year that are extraordinary and related to COVID. These include specific additional hires in the following areas. Nurses, building substitutes and bus monitors. Which is a depart D E S I recommendation. We have also identified reasonably anticipated staff replacements due to leaves. For four teachers and three paraprofessionals. In addition, there are compensatory services related to special education that will require an additional OTPT. Speech pathologist and psychological services. The district has requested support to cover costs in the areas of PPE. Additional custodial support for implementing cleaning procedures and an LPN. To assist with medical issues and coverage related to COVID through submittals to Chief Stowers. There are also COVID related trainings for health and safety, platform training and instructional training related to hybrid slash remote learning. We need for staff as school is not being held in the traditional model. We have asked for additional items such as subscriptions for student learning programs and additional technology to support the new educational model. As further explanation, the Wi-Fi upgrade for MPS is necessary. The wireless project is to replace all of the access points in the three buildings over two years. MHS in one year and GMS and Fowler in year two. It is necessary because our current access points are reaching the end of their life cycle. All of the access points are from the time around the construction of Maynard High School. So approximately seven years old. Wireless technology has improved a great deal since then. And the current outdated APs will struggle as we shift to a one to one parentheses actually more than one to one and parentheses. Model district wide. We are also emphasizing student and teacher creation of multimedia content, which demands a great deal of bandwidth. These will include the increased use of digital whiteboard videos, green screen and potentially virtual reality. This project will certainly be helpful in our. New model models of education as we are in a situation where teachers are video conferencing to students from school to home. Or from classroom to classroom. We may also have a situation where students are in school, but primarily relying on a digital curriculum. In which case, we may have a high percentage of students access the internet simultaneously. All of this will tax the existing wireless infrastructure. The plan was to put this as a capital request, so it wouldn't disrupt the regular budget. In addition, E-rate will reimburse up to 50% of the cost of the project. And actually, we will likely be. Able to hold back these funds from the vendor, in which case we can turn back half of the funding authorization. In addition to the costs outlined above, there have been several areas that negatively impacted our revenue last year, and we anticipate. Will still be significantly less in recent years, which. We will need to adjust for in our operating budget. For instance, pre-K tuition FY19. Was 173,846 in FY20. It was 139,525. FY21 is unknown at this time. Facility rental in FY19 was 35,873. FY20 was 56,940 and FY21 is unknown at this time. The Excel program FY19 was 653,953. 520 was 424,058. And fiscal year 21 is anticipated to be about 412,480. Based on a 40 week year with full enrollment. To summarize with our current funding of ESTER, CVRF reopening, CARES monies and the school portion of the town shortfall. We are 267,249 underfunded. We are requesting relief of the 265,422 so that we are able to transparently and adequately plan for and service the students of Maynard. Maynard in terms of health, safety and academics. We were on the risk of not being able to secure adequate building substitutes, nurses for our school buildings. And negatively impacting the operational budget in generate in general without this relief. Sorry, that's long.
Okay, thank you. So again, we can't really entertain pretty much any of that, just because I mean, we can listen to it and we can. Then look at the documentation. Again, we do a lot of research into into our numbers as you guys do. So so it's kind of hard to to get that at the meeting. But, you know, so what I'm understanding is you don't want us to cut. You don't. The schools don't want to cut any of the money. We are doing the $72,000 on capital that's already on the capital, correct? So that's already counted. And with the around $800,000 you are getting from the CARES money, you need an additional. So it'll be about 1.2 over a million dollars that you need for COVID. I guess my question would be, what were the cuts before this? Because there were cuts because you've known about these for about six weeks now that. We're going to need 265,000 in cuts. So I'm thinking that there were cuts that were supposed that were in the in the. In the pipeline to be done. And I know that, you know, you've known everybody talked about what they were, but we obviously knew you had to make them. So were those also considered? Have those cuts been made?
Those I I you know what? I cannot speak to that. I mean, exactly, but my understanding is that we were waiting for. Guidance from DESI as to what sorts of things we were going to need to bring in. So yes, those cuts were entertained and taken. Taken into consideration, but then these other. Parameters for partial reopening, hybrid, whatnot. Were just came in within the last few weeks. We learned about transportation. We had originally thought that we would be able to do. Two thirds of the students per bus. Turns out we can only do one third of the students per bus. We thought we were going to have two students per seat. We can only have one person, one student per seat. Per seat. So our transportation has expanded. Then the the recommendation that we have bus monitors, that was new. All there were several other positions that they recommended. That were all new that just came, you know, a week and a half ago.
Okay.
So.
So but that so my my main question right now is, did you make that 265,000 cut first?
I believe we did, but I can't answer that for certain because that was not something. Natasha, I don't know if that's something you guys have discussed in budget subcommittee or not. If you want to speak to that, but.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
No, we hadn't discussed specifically what type of cuts. That were anticipated or being had. I know to echo what you were indicating, a lot of it was waiting for the guidance. Obviously, we're not going to be cutting. Certain areas and then we find out later that we need to rehire them. So that's not really best operational practices. The safety protocols, all those things were necessary. We had addressed some in FY19 going into it. We've had conversations about salaries and whatnot, but a lot of things were unknown. So making decisions about firm data or understanding. And I think where we left off before, it was waiting for the receipt numbers to come in. I know that that was a conversation that I think happened in July as well. So it wasn't all that far along ago. That we got more confirmation on what was expected to be cut.
Okay, so and I'll I will let this go and I'll let other people talk, obviously. But when we had the tri board meeting, the town showed the town side of what we were what we are cutting. Because we are. It's our responsibility to cut as well. And and at that point, school committee did say they don't really want to come to the table with the cuts because they're not sure budget related. They don't. They're not sure contractual or whatnot. But it sounds like you didn't do the cuts prior to coming to the table at the tri board meeting.
That. So my understanding from Jen Gow was that they had in fact done that.
Okay.
I was shown.
Running through scenarios. They had done that, but obviously nothing can be done. Without confirmation of the numbers. So you're not going to. Not going to cut anything without confirmation of what you need to be cut.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for school committee?
Just quick comment, if I may, Justine. My, there was a lot in that, Lydia. I know you recognize that. There's a lot in what you read. But most of it sounded to me, and perhaps you can correct me if I'm wrong, but most of it sounded to me to be stuff that would. Likely. And I'm not familiar enough with the CARES Act to understand what it is and is not going to be. Included in reimbursement from the federal government relative to COVID issues. But it sounds like most of that is. Stuff that's, you know, well, if it's the state, and I know we've had this conversation, if it's the state issues saying that you need bus monitors. Have they come out and said that these are mandated? Or are these just want nice to haves or?
That's part of the problem is that the state isn't really mandating anything, right? So we have to do our. Our due diligence and our research in. What? Is the safest method to reopen schools if we choose to go that route? And we are trying to abide by the guidance to, you know, the extent that we can. Possible so that we can make sure that our teachers and our parents feel comfortable. With their their kids and the teachers themselves going back into the building. And we are having a very difficult time reassuring people that we can accomplish that because. We don't have the staff and we don't necessarily have the resources and. So. I mean, essentially, what it could come down to is the finances might end up making the decision for us. That's all. And I mean, this isn't, we're not digging in our heels about this. We're not going to put up a fight. We just want you to know that. This, you know, every little bit helps for us right now in because. We have no idea if we're going to lose three teachers or 30 teachers over this, depending on what we decide. I mean, we have a lot of really, really scared and unhappy. People. In the community right now, and we are basically having to choose the best option out of. Three really terrible options.
And then the other comment, the other comment, Lydia, I would make sort of echoes some of the comments that Justine made. In that not only did we have a discussion and relative to. What was on the horizon at the tri board meeting, but there were discussions at the. Budget subcommittee meetings previous to that, you know, between the Board of Select and Finance Committee. And I remember one particular meeting that was somewhat contentious where. You know, some school school members, not members of the committee per se, but school representatives of the administration. Were pretty straightforward in saying, well, we can make those cuts. We'll make those cuts. And now we sit here probably eight weeks, 12 weeks later. And it appears that that statement that evening may not have been accurate. That the cuts weren't made, or if they were, they were sort of put on a shelf. And that's somewhat disturbing because the town, you know, we have tough decisions to make, too. And we made them. Now I realize that there is a difference there relative to the education of the students and everything else. But it's a little bit disturbing when, you know, we had that discussion, like I say, eight eight weeks ago at least. And the budget subcommittee meeting. And this is this shouldn't be a real surprise. But it is what it is at this point.
It's not a real surprise. And yes, they worked it out how we could absorb those.
One thing that came up today. Hello, can you hear me? I know today also kept. Yeah, something came up today about the capital expenses that were approved at town regarding the Fowler Green Meadow bathrooms. I guess that was some new expense that the schools were also absorbing. I don't know. There were some costs. I don't have the details about that, but that came up in our discussions as well today. So I'd be interested to hear a little bit more about that.
Oh, sorry, Justin. Go ahead.
I can answer that. That is false. We've been handling all those articles through the DPW. We've been handling all those articles through the DPW, Natasha. I don't know where that information is coming from. I am managing both the bathroom upgrades, the roof upgrades, et cetera, through the DPW accounts, through the town meeting appropriations for those capital. So I don't know where, um, where that conversation is coming from.
So, um, so there was information, and I, I don't know, this came up again during our deliberations. I haven't seen any communication, but I guess there was some conversation about a limit of, of possibly the school absorbing some, I don't know if it was, the estimate was over, um, what was expected. Um, and so something, something was discussed with Wayne. Um, so it'd be helpful to hear what, if there was any discrepancy there.
No, so the discussion I had with Wayne, Natasha, was that to make sure that the facility line was not expended too early based on some of the PP requirements, et cetera, that we have failure points throughout the facilities, um, in a number of areas that we want to make sure that we don't expend that line too early in case we have issues further down the line. If the hybrid model switches back to a full-time school model, and we need to make sure that the facility is run properly throughout the entire year. That was the conversation.
So I guess the, the only other question I have for this, um, and this is kind of a tough one as well, but if we hadn't gotten the information back from the state that everything was level funded and we hadn't resc, and Greg hadn't rescinded that, um, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of general stabilization, would you still have come to us for this?
Well, yes, and I'll tell you why. Because we, it is our duty as school committee members to advocate for our schools. It doesn't mean that you have to grant us what our request is, right? But we would be remiss in not making this request. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, I guess it, the only reason I'm curious about it is just the timing of it, because I know the budget subcommittee meeting, when Greg said last week that it wasn't that he was rescinding that, so, um, so that money would stay in general stabilization. I had heard that there was conversation at budget subcommittee about trying to get more money then. And then that's why at the discussion on last Tuesday night, we didn't vote on it, because we thought we had been, we're going to hear something from the school committee. Um, but again, it almost felt like, it, it felt like a cause and effect. Like, we're not going to take money out of general stabilization for the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so there's money up for grabs, almost. Um, however, we are taking it out for the stabilization fund, uh, for the, for the MSBA study and everything else, so.
On, on that point, Justine, and this is a question for Greg, is it too late if we wanted to, to put that to the voters for the MSBA and therefore not take it out of general stabilization? I think we passed it last week on to FinCom, so maybe if FinCom, we could ask them to turn it down, if that's what we wanted. I'm just exploring the options, not saying we should do that.
It's a fair question. So, so you have a couple of options, but none of them are great. So if you, you would have to, you'd have to basically, like you said, rescind, revoke, whatever the, whatever term is, the, what you, what you already approved to be passed on to the finance committee. And finance committee, that can all happen, but time is against us, right? So we have, we have this meeting, we have next meeting, and then only one other scheduled meeting, right? So we can schedule more. Um, but, but, you know, we need to get that warrant finalized by September second. So, and then, and then that means if there's any changes on the fly, which is always possible, like, I don't even think our citizens petitions are, are due. I can't remember when they're due, but in other words, there could be another article, which I think there is, I think there's at least one more article we just, we just heard about from CPC, uh, Community Preservation. But I don't think, imagine it being that controversial. So in other words, it, like, the time constraint is so tough with that. But if we get closer and closer to that September second, and that's really all the time we have, because we got to get the warrants over to Action Unlimited, we got to give them out the door, so and so forth. I mean, to change the plan now is fine, but I, I'll need time to go back. So, so if the board gives me direction to change the plan, I need to go back and figure out a new plan. And so, and, and.
Do you need that tonight, Greg, or can we talk about it next week, once we've had time to absorb the information?
I won't be here next week. So, so you, I mean, but you're, you're in good hands, otherwise, I'm just saying, it's, um, and I, and I, and you haven't asked for my advice, but I, I would, I probably would advise it.
Okay.
Can I just say something, Justine?
Sure.
So I think maybe there's, um, a bit of a misunderstanding. It's not that we're coming out now and asking for that money back. The way the course of events unrolled was the town budget subcommittee had a meeting, discussed this. It was then reported to me, um, after your Board of Selectman meeting last Tuesday, that you guys required a statement from us regarding our feelings about this two sixty-five. That is what I was told, that was what my email was about, because I was getting conflicting information about what you guys were needing from us, right? So yes, we were all prepared to do the two sixty-five. Then, once we were asked for a statement to weigh in on this, um, the way it was worded to me or explained to me was, how does the school committee feel about having to pay this two sixty-five? So we were like, oh, well, we'll tell you how we feel about it, right? This is how we feel about it. But it wasn't like, all of a sudden, we were like, you know what? We should ask them not to make us pay that two sixty-five. It was because it had been discussed in the town budget subcommittee, and then at the Board of Selectman meeting, and then it was asked of me to provide a statement where we stood on this. So that, that is how this all evolved.
Okay, I don't know, because it's funny, when you, when you sent that email la- last week, I actually didn't know what you were talking about, because I, we didn't ask.
And that, and I didn't understand either. So that's why I was asking for clarification, because I had been told by number of people, we need to, we need to make a statement, we need to have a vote, and we need to submit it to the Board of Selectmen by Tuesday night. So.
Okay.
That's, sorry.
No, that's okay. Chris, did you have something?
Yeah. What is the, what is the difference in cost to the district for one kid in a seat versus two kids in a seat on a school bus? And what, what rationale did anybody that's been paying attention to COVID use to determine that they were going to put two children in one seat?
Um, so it wasn't determined, right? We were, I think it was wishful thinking, honestly. I think it was wishful thinking. And, um, and then, and because of conversations with Commissioner Riley, and Desi wasn't willing to come out and say, because they were getting a lot of pushback from communities about how expensive transportation was, and people were asking for relief or some sort of assistance in transportation, because it was going to cost so much. And we all paid for the buses all spring, regardless of the fact that they weren't servicing, right? Because we didn't want them to go out of business. So we needed them to still be there when school reopened. So we paid for them, not full, but there was a negotiation, and we did pay for them through the spring, even though they weren't providing service. So I think what the basis of the decision was, um, was Desi put it off as long as they could, because they were getting a lot of pushback and a lot of, um, requests to try to make the guidance as lenient as possible, so that we could reopen the economy. And, uh, it wasn't until two Fridays ago that they came out and said, nope, sorry, it's going to be one kid per seat, and they have to sit six feet away from each other, facing forward mit, with masks on. And then the districts came back and said, have you seen kids on a bus? Who's going to do that? So then Desi said, all right, well, you need monitors then.
What's the, what's the difference in cost between two and one? Like, two in a, two in a seat and one in a seat, do you know? Like, do we know, do we know what that number is? You, you referenced a number, I'm just, I'm just calling out something you referenced. Like, you, you said that that's going to, that's going to be a killer to the budget. So like, to what degree does that have on the budget, that, that change?
I don't have that exact number, but that's already included in our budget. That is not part of this, um, statement in terms of.
Well, it is part of the statement, because you read it.
All right, sorry, sorry. Overall, it's part of our expenses, okay? Overall, it is an increased expense. It is, um, I don't know what the exact number is, but basically, it's our transportation cost times three now.
Lydia, we looked into minimal attendance models for the school district, where, you know, we're, we're way towards the remote, but there's still some onsite presence, especially for students who, who most need the extra attention from teachers to get it. So you minimize, you know, numbers of people, and at the same time, um, but still aren't fully remote.
Yes. We are looking at that. Um, one of the issues that we're up against is that our special ed teachers are in the same union as our regular teachers. So, um, if we say that the buildings aren't safe to come back for all teachers, it's not ethical for us to then say, oh, except for the special ed teachers have to come back and service those students.
The most dangerous thing in the, the buildings are people, right? So if, if, if the safety can be, you know, as long as the total number of people circulating is below a certain threshold, that to me seems like the critical threshold for safety, not, you know, some magical cleaning protocol for the building. It's, it's just reducing the number of person-to-person interactions. That's your safety factor right there. And so that seems to me, towards the minimal model of, of staffing and students, but you still don't have to go full remote, and you can still be flexible and meet the needs of the students who are there. And you don't need bus.
Um, what do you mean, you don't need bus monitors? We'd still need to provide bus.
Well, if you have so few students on the bus. Uh, it's, it's a minor point, I think the major.
Um, so then we get into the issue with Green Meadow and, um, the bad ventilation system, which, um, is supposedly working, but we now are required to run our, our AC unit, or not our AC, but our, our ventilation units, um, twenty-four hours a day. They're very old. We don't know if they'll be able to hold up. Um, we don't believe the HVAC is a problem at Fowler or the high school, but at Green Meadow, it's definitely a question. We also have issue, because there's no air conditioning in Green Meadow, and it is very hot in there in the fall. Um, and the teachers tend to open up the windows to allow more air in to circulate. Unfortunately, that then negates the effect that the air purifiers in those rooms have, and they end up working overtime. So we either close the windows, everyone's hot and stuffy, so that the air purifiers can do their job, or we open the windows and use box fans to blow the air out of the windows, but then that reduces the effectiveness of the air purifiers.
And, and I'm not sure if this is a rock, but if we're down to a minimum we staffed model, minimum number of students, do we need all three buildings to be operational in that case?
We do not, but if we are going to bring in the little kids, uh, they can't use the toilets at Fowler or the high school, because they're too big for them. Um, and, uh, there are several other issues, um, that deal with pre-K and, and what they need for their in-class, um, toileting.
So I guess part of the question I have to jump in real quick, Lydia, is, is you mentioned the, the issues about Green Meadow, but are there things on the list that you, that you're providing to us that fix those issues? Or are you just saying that those are issues that, that you guys are having to grapple with?
Those are issues that we have to grapple with.
Okay, all right.
Hey, Justine, I got, I got something, because I want to follow up on two things. Is one, what you said earlier on, I, I think, uh, is important to just get a, an understanding. And we understand we're in a situation right now that's, you know, you know, uh, that's something that you cannot be, uh, able to be prepared for, because we didn't know what was going on. But you made a good point. About eight weeks ago, um, the school committee was asked to make the certain cuts that were supposed to be done. Um, and then we don't know whether or not it happened, because nobody's clear about that, whether or not it happened, because we're just thinking that it happened. And in doubt, money would have been available for this situation that we're in right now. And the other point that Justine made, and I don't know if it's a coincidence, and, and this is not you, Lydia, because you weren't there in the past, but it seems like every time there's money available in the town, the school committee comes knocking on our door. So that's nothing to say that we're, we're in the situation we're in right now. But that's just the, just the coincidence that happened, that Justine said, uh, why did it happen now? Um, you know, it, it happened, this has happened in the past, where all of a sudden, there's money available and, and free cash or whatever, and all of a sudden, the school committee wants a piece of that. So we want to make sure that we provide what's necessary for the schools to be safe, to provide the education, absolutely. But at the same time, there's got to be some accountability on, on the administration side to make sure that they are prepared for the unforeseen. And, and I don't know whether or not those cuts were made. We, nobody knows, because we don't know the fact.
Okay. Though the cuts were accounted for, right? So if you told us tomorrow, you have to get rid of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, we can do it, right? We have those cuts prepared. It's going to affect how we reopen, but we have those cuts prepared. We didn't make the cuts final, because we were told we didn't have to until we had the information in October. We were told, you may have to cut it by this amount in October. We weren't told to absolutely go ahead and do it. So that's why we haven't gone ahead and done it.
Okay, I know, it's just, okay, no problem. I mean, just, I'm following up on what Justine said, because she has some good points there, and I'm just, and David's, uh, I mentioned a few things too. So it's something that, again, you were not here in the past. Where it happened, it happens. So unfortunately, you know, we want to not be put in position all the time to, to say, okay, well, someone's going to have to take, you know, some, you know, hit someplace, but we have to give it to the school, you know? So we have to cut maybe on our services in town, so we can provide to the school. So we don't want to be put in that position all the time, because it's not a, it's not a fun position, you know?
We don't want to put anyone in that position. I also would just like to remind everyone that we did lose, uh, Michelle Rosales in January. We had an interim from January to the end of June, and we now are on our third business manager in a year. So there, there has been a little bit of information lost along the way. Wayne is working really hard to get up to speed and understand what has happened and, and what is being required of him. But again, things are changing daily, daily for us. I was in the office, I was in there with them all day last, I think it was Thursday. And it was one call after another for Brian. He's getting a call from the union saying, okay, well, we'll, we'll agree to this, but we won't do that. Or he's getting a call from the commissioner and, or other superintendents. And it's just, it is evolving so rapidly, that even if we make a decision on something, it changes. And then we're like, well, okay, now we got to start all over again. I mean, it is, it is mind-blowing how convoluted and complex and disorganized this entire process has been. The governor has completely dropped the ball, and it's landed on us, and it's not fair at all. It's not fair. We aren't scientists, we keep having to make this decision.
I'm not disagreeing with you, it's not fair, because all, all municipalities are dealing with the same thing. So it's the same thing with the school districts. Everybody's dealing with the same thing. It's things that we have to figure out on our own, and certainly don't want to be in your position about trying to figure out what's going on, because everything is changing all the time. So, but I was just trying to make a point, because that's not something to do with the situation we're in right now. It's just, uh, it's just a matter of principle, you know?
Yeah.
I understand. So again.
No, go ahead, Lydia.
We aren't demanding this. We just, we were asked for a statement, we're giving the statement. I can rescind the statement if you want me to. Um, but this is, that's, that's how it evolved, right? I was told we needed to provide a statement, we did, so.
Thank you, Lydia, this is not an easy time for you guys.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
All right, so does anybody else have any questions for Lydia? Before we move on to see if anyone else has public comments about the budget in general, or anything else? All right, so I will, so what I'll do is, um, does anybody else have any other comments about the general town fund? Any of the board members have anything? Uh, any of the public have anything?
Hi, this is Natasha Rivera. I have a comment. I'll speak as a resident, um, that understanding the consideration of so much being unknown, um, and with a cut that is being asked for two hundred and sixty-five thousand, I would hope that we. I would hope that we could think about how we would reevaluate as potential income, uh, to the town comes in. How that might also offset possibly some relief to the school department. Um, as that is, is there a mechanism that, that could be reassessed along the way? I don't know how, but just a consideration. I know the marijuana tax is still yet to be unknown when that comes in. So I would, you know, hope there's some conversation on, on, on that possibly. We can, you know, because once we cut it, that, that's really harsh at that point. So how do we, on, on ongoing basis, think about, um, reevaluating where our position is as we get more receipts and income, um, certainties to the town? Um, and the other part too is just highlighting that this, this education that we provide um, is a service, is a town service as well, equal to the other services that we, we, we do for, um, for the town. So, um, what we are saying by not funding it or requiring us to step back funding is really saying that we are okay with, um, not providing the full level of service that could compromise safety and health considerations. So, um, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Natasha. Uh, does anybody else have anything? So hearing nothing, um, I'm going to move, move to accept and approve and forward to the finance committee, draft control F, which is the town general fund budget. And, uh, voting is, let's see, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I forgot who I had. And I am a yes as well. So we'll move that on to, um, on to the finance committee. Um, in recognition, again, like I said at the beginning of this, um, does anyone have, um, members of the public? I know, like I said, that the board members pretty much hashed out a lot of this last week, um, which is any of the, um, anyone else have any other comments regarding either the fire station debt exclusion, the transfer of capital for capital stabilization from cap- capital stabilization or the MS feasibility study? Um, does anyone else have any comments regarding those items? And I don't see anything. So those will, I, I believe that those were discussed the other night, la- last night. Thank you, Ken. Um, alright, then hearing nothing, we'll move on to, um, 4B, which is the planning status, which is, uh, an update for the developments for the execution of the special town meeting, which is, uh, was scheduled for October 5th of 2020. Greg?
Okay, yeah. Spoiler. So, no, um, we, we had our first, I mean, I, I mean, we've been talking about special timing for, for a while now, but we had our first sort of real get-together working group. Um, Dick Downey, town moderator, myself, Justin St. John was able to, to call in. Um, but Justin DiMarco, DBW director, Kyle Brainerd, the head custodian, Michelle Jenkins, the town clerk. Um, so it's similar sort of core group that we had, uh, in preparation for the annual town meeting in June. And, and we looked at, you know, we asked, the first question was indoors or outdoors? And we, and we weighed the pros and cons to each. Then, then we said, alright, outdoors seems preferable. Um, and then, when do we do it? Okay, so October 5th is a Monday. Not, not great when you're trying to hold an outdoor meeting, especially in October. So we decided what other dates might be there, B? And, um, mainly due to scheduling of the elections coming up and then, and this sort of, and some other matters, but October 3rd, so two days before, um, was proposed and sort of settled on, um, by the end of the meeting, um, this morning, um, with a rain date of October 4th. So that would be the Saturday, October 3rd, and then the Sunday, October 4th. And then the location, um, is, um, an- another thing we have to work out. So our, our first vote is to go back to the same parking lot, but with, um, the potential, although I don't know where it stands right now, but the potential that, um, um, that a portion of that same parking lot at the mill may be used for rider trucks, um, storage. Um, we might have to, we either adjust, um, the use of that parking lot if we can use it at all, or go up to the upper
That's not happening. Greg, that, Greg, that's not happening anymore, the rider truck thing.
That's what I heard, but I, I want to see that in writing.
Oh, okay.
You're, you're not wrong. So what Armin is alluding to is that we, we had received word that the rider truck proposal is withdrawn. But I, I do, I just want to make sure it's like all said and done. I shot an email over to Lincoln Property Group. Uh, just to, just to make sure that I was on the same page as them. But, but, but the point is like, we, we want to be able to go back to the parking lot. We, we want to be able to just execute a very similar scenario, maybe some, some adjustments according to what turnout may be or, or, and some of the lessons learned a- as we were, you know, as from the setup. But it was such a, everyone did such a good job. Um, and, and everyone kind of knows exactly what, what to do now. So we didn't want to kind of recreate the reel too much. And then, um, and costs too. Uh, the costs, the cost, there are costs more than a regular town meeting. But because over the past couple of months, we've been, you know, through town meeting and then also setting up for the expansion of outdoor use at downtown, we have, we have equipment on hand. So it's, so we won't have to rebuy jersey barriers or cones or something to, to, to a degree. But we do have to pay for the vendors, so audiovisual vendors, um, lavatories, outdoor lavatories, overtime to DBW or, or otherwise, like there, there's just some costs, no matter what, that, that we're going to have to do. And so we'll have to make sure that, that that could be budgeted because we applied those costs to the reimbursements or for reimbursements from FEMA and CARES Act. So we'll have to just see if we can do that. So in other words, we're kind of at the beginning of, and then we'll have regular meetings every week, just like we did for annual town meeting. And start, and start tying into people. I need to make sure that WAVM is on board. So that's all I'm saying. There, we're kind of at the, we're kind of at the start of the, that the, getting the ball rolling.
Greg, uh, just a quick question. Are you aware if there are any old-fashioned blue laws that in any way restrict public town meetings on a Sunday?
Wow, look, kind of like entertainment. Yeah, um, clever. I don't know. I'll look, I'll look.
Uh, there may be old that never were revoked, you know? I mean statewide laws, not necessarily mannered, but state laws that, that forbid, um, public, uh, meetings, town meetings on Sundays.
I'll check because I, no, yeah, right. Because there's the Sunday entertainment license you have to get separate. So, yeah.
Uh, Becky looks like she has a, maybe an answer.
Yeah, we've done a special town meeting for 129 Parker Street on a Sunday before. So we had it in three rooms at Fowler School.
But maybe we need like
Back in 2013, I think we did that one.
Excellent.
I, uh, of course I remember that. That was on a Sunday?
Yeah.
I don't remember that, but okay.
Piece of information. There is written note from Paul Sullivan that the rider thing is not going to happen. It was an email this afternoon and it was removed from the planning board agenda for tonight's planning board meeting.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Jack? Uh, anybody else have anything for Greg regarding the, uh, town meeting plan? Uh, Ken?
So, uh, Greg, I was curious as to whether Fowler School had been, uh, looked at. You know, I think we had, uh, decided that we wanted to do the annual town meeting, uh, at the mill because one, we didn't know how many people were going to show up. Um, and, uh, you know, just the logistics of having it all there. Um, I guess where I was saying is, of course, at Fowler School, um, you have the, uh, uh, overhang there, which would mean that we wouldn't have to, uh, rent or set up, um, uh, a tent. Um, and assuming that with special town meeting, you know, we, you know, I realize that there's a lot of things on the, the agenda, but certainly wouldn't end up having, uh, necessarily more people there. It might cut down on the cost. So I was just curious as to whether Fowler School was, uh, reviewed as a possible location.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. So it, it was initially, but not, but, I mean, it was not to the point where we'd kind of gone down the path of like, okay, this is what we all like. Like, so when, when Dick Downey was saying where to go and then, and then he'd already sort of had in mind going back to the mill. So, so, you know, yes and no. So I'll have to ask, but we, you know, Justin DiMarco and Kyle Brainerd had, had plans already schemed, you know, they had a schematic, so to speak, of, of the ingress, ingress and egress and Word Park and everything like that. So, so we have a draft of plans for the Fowler School, but I'd have to, but it's, it's the, so like, uh, I'm advising the town moderator and, and so I would have to do that with him, as you could do or anyone else could do. Like if you, if you think there's pros and cons to one site versus another, I mean, I, I try to sort of, I try to meet Dick Downey's vision. That's what I'm trying.
I understand, but just given the, the, how much we're trying to find money, uh, this year, seems like if we could save the, the lease of the parking lot and the setup of equipment might help.
That's clever. That's a good point.
Yeah, I would definitely be, can, uh, be curious as far as, I know that I saw the schematics back when it was being planned. Um, but as far as how many cars, I also think the setup would be different, obviously for Fowler, because I don't think you could have it under the overhang because there would be so many cars out towards the soccer field. So you wouldn't be able to, you'd have to kind of go around the corner to see them, but I, I don't know. But, um, but it'd be interesting to see how many cars they can fit in that.
Yeah.
Alright, anyone else? Okay, then let's move on to item five. Uh, which is move to approve the reorganization of town staff with the addition of the water superintendent position under the supervision of the Department of Public Works Director. Do I have a second?
Again.
Thank you, Jeff and Chris. Greg, would you like to start this off?
Oh, sure. So just as a reintroduction to this topic, um, the, um, DBW director, uh, Justin DiMarco, in, in collaboration with myself, our consultants, when it comes to setting the water rates and, and enterprise budgets and whatnot. Um, and actually discussions about this position, the water superintendent position, happened when I first came on board with Aaron, Aaron McClosco. Um, but, you know, we were kind of evaluating the, and at that time, the focus was trying to get the, the well, you know, the one of the wells had just failed, so we were trying to focus on that. And anyways, now, now we, we were able to, to at least get a grip onto where we were with our, our, frankly, it was kind of the emergency with our water supplies, stable enough so that we were able to now start to do and start to implement long-term planning. This is one aspect, and I believe very key aspect in execution of those long-term plans. But those long-term plans have also been implemented, um, mainly through the rates. So, so those long-term plans require capital investments as well as regular operating investments and to meet our regulatory obligations. So as, as everyone was familiar with, you know, um, DEP had, had sort of advised, strongly advised, um, the town to start implementing some changes and personnel is one of those changes. So, um, you know, we're a small city and we, and we have a huge reliance on our, on our water supply and our sewer systems and whatnot. And personnel is how you, is how you're successful in that. And so this position is going to, um, oversee the daily operations, but as well as, and I think, I think just as importantly, um, sort of steward the long-term planning, um, for, for the water and sewer enterprise funds. So this, this position, the budget for this position is already implemented and approved and appropriated um, because the rates were, were accepted and approved by, by the selectmen, which were then incorporated into the budget that was appropriated at town meeting for the water and sewer enterprises. Um, but, you know, we had presented this a couple of months, uh, I can't remember how many meetings ago, um, to the selectmen. And there were questions about, about, um, you know, um, the roles of this position, how this position would sort of foresee that, you know, how the, how this position would, would enable the success of our, of our plans and whatnot. And so, um, and additionally, sort of, what are the value of this position versus an outside consultant or a contractor? And we, we as a small town, just like most small towns, are very reliant on outside contractors to a degree. I mean, because in, in my opinion, there, there has to be, there's a strong value in having a, a full-time position. However, there, there is advantages, very much advantages when you have an outside contractor. But in this case, I've, I firmly, um, um, I strongly recommend this position as, as, as you are, are aware of. So that's where we stand. But I, but Justin DiMarco, it's, it's his proposal, so I would leave it to him for further questions. And, um, in reiteration, Justin, if you want to kind of walk through the, the, the answers to some of the questions, um, that we received.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. So realistically, we're, uh, continuing the conversation, um, that we've been discussing for, uh, you know, several months in different capacities, you know, some from infrastructure improvement, others from, um, equipment improvement and then staffing levels, et cetera. Um, the memo kind of highlights that in a, in a timeline basis. So, you know, everybody can kind of take a brief history lesson and go back in time on board docs and kind of see why we're at this position and, and how it's going to continue to evolve, uh, month after month, year after year, as this utility is very complex and there's a number of deficiencies and gaps. And managing that moving forward will take, um, will take a lot of time, a lot of discussion, a lot of understanding, um, from all parties involved. You know, this is a situation where rates affect all of these and rates are something that affect every resident. Um, I would tell you that I think our customer base is 98% of the current residents. We're almost every resident in Maynard is hooked up to the utility in one capacity or another. So realistically, this does affect, um, you, the majority of the town as a whole. So, um, I know at, um, one of, I want to say, three BOs meetings ago, um, the board put on record, um, several questions and concerns related to, um, this position. And then realistically, I think long-term visions and goals for the utility as a whole. Um, in return, uh, myself and the department put together a memo response to those questions with exhibits and data as required. Um, throughout our, um, throughout our analysis, um, this is something that we have, we have been doing since I, uh, since I onboarded and, and Greg can reiterate, has been done prior to me as well. I took over some of the plans. Um, we rearranged some of the plans from previous, um, to address some of the issues within town, competing against some of the other issues within town and trying to fit everything together. Um, in a nice little puzzle for, for the board to kind of figure out all, uh, all the big issues in front of them. So with some of those adjustments came, um, you know, some of our long-term infrastructure planning, some of our equipment replacement planning and as well as some of our staffing level, um, plans. Originally, our staffing level plans were, um, implemented in a way that was, um, consistent and, um, didn't reach peak where we would, uh, you know, accumulate a number of staff within one year that would, uh, hit the rate users at an alarming rate. DEP kind of sped this up based off of some of the complaints that were, um, delivered their way through the EPA, through some users that were dissatisfied with, uh, the water quality and, um, some other issues within the utility as a whole. So when that happens, DEP issues responses, as you can see, as one of the attachment there is DEP correspondence through email, which is their normal approach, um, when dealing with, uh, any utility within Massachusetts. But we can kind of walk through, um, the questions, um, by the board and I can kind of walk through some of our comments as a whole, if that's what the board would, um, would prefer. I'm looking on a little direction so I don't talk for two hours, if that's not what you want.
Um, if you, so the brief overview you just kind of did in general, um, I know that, I guess, I'm comfortable turning it over to questions and comments, um, and have people just answer if that's, if that works for you, Justin? Or would you like to give a little bit more?
Um, I'm fine because there is some in-depth questions. Again, I could rattle on for hours. Some of these questions are, are, you know, conceptual theoretical questions that we could talk about for a very long time. Um, but if there is something specific that, you know, each board member really wants to focus on, I think that might be more productive, um, because if there is some concerns with the way the board wants to vote and it's hinging on one specific question, or maybe one, you know, something within the analysis that didn't hit home to what they were thinking, I can answer those as well. So whatever the board wants.
Okay, why don't we do that? That way, because that way, I mean, like I said, you, you did do an extensive amount of, uh, you included an extensive amount of information in here, so, um, so we could be here all night. Um, but so why don't I open it up for questions from the board? Uh, does anyone have any questions for Justin regarding?
Can I, can I start? Yeah.
So one of the things that we mentioned last time, first of all, I, I personally appreciate what you submitted to us and the information you provided us with and, and, um, very understanding of why it's important that you think this position and Greg thinks that this position is something that'll help us, um, you know, down the road in the future and planning. Uh, one of the things that I'm not clear about is how is that going to help us with the challenges that we're facing in regards to water? Um, and so I don't know how this person And so I don't know how this person that is going to be sitting in this position is going to help us with that challenge. And the other thing is that I had I had asked last time, I would love to see a side by side comparison with someone we hire in our in our in town as opposed to consultants or outside contractors. How is that compare side by side from a cost perspective? And you know, what do we get in return? Because if you look at a consultant standpoint, this is the way I see it from a business standpoint, you don't have to come up with the benefits. That's cost. So there are things that I think we have to look at the whole picture and say, all right, so if we put this side by side, what are the costs, you know, cause and effect from a cost perspective? So that was something that I didn't see in in this, you know, you know, submission of all the information you provided us. I didn't see the consultant side of things. What is that going to look like if we put it side by side with the with this with this position?
Okay, Armin, I can answer those two questions. So this position isn't just a position for the long term. It's a position for the now. This is a position that has high expertise and water quality and treatment processes. Something that DEP has highlighted several times and something that we deal with extensively with our old Marlboro Treatment Plants and our water quality issues. So this position's immediate goal is to monitor and collaborate extensively with our operators on our treatment processes to try to move that forward. Currently, we do that through our our consultants, which are responsive, but at the same time, we're not one, we're one of many clients. And realistically, the priorities of Maynard aren't always the priorities of the consultant. We want on demand service immediately as the complexities of our water treatment processes and the drastic changes that are happening with minute by minute with some of our pumping issues at some of our wells needs to be addressed by an in house person. And this is that, this is that technical expert person in regards to the comparison between consultants, et cetera. So if you look, I did a, I did, I gave you kind of holistic view of on question four and comment four. These are our overall costs in FY eighteen, FY nineteen, FY twenty for both consultant and engineering services. But realistically, I have an hourly breakdown sheet, which I can provide as secondary information for the board. Our normal consultant fees for the utility process with our water and sewer range anywhere from $180 an hour to $250 an hour. This includes all of their benefits, et cetera. We get hourly breakdowns. VHB for, I'll give another comparison. VHB and our consultant engineer Wayne Amico is $200 an hour in house. So if you look back at, I want to say exhibit, give me one second. If you look at exhibit F, that is our hourly breakdown sheet that the treasurer's collector's office has. It includes retirement, hourly health insurance, Medicare, et cetera. Those are what's considered the fringe benefits. If you look all the way to the right, you'll see the total hourly cost of every single person within the DPW. I didn't like to put everybody's name on there, but I put my name on there for a reason. But some of the lower four are for our 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 actual employees right now in those positions. And you can see the range in the fringe benefits, but we average anywhere between I want to say $40 an hour to $50 an hour with our day to day staff within those levels. And you'll see the water superintendent position highlighted at $55 an hour within that hourly breakdown, including all fringe benefits. You know, just the basic principal breakdown, that's a 25% cost compared to consultants. Now I will highlight that and break that down with hourly sheets. We have them in our contracts. I think the board might be familiar when they see the VHB contract that normally comes up once a year in the hourly breakdown sheet. That's usually at the back of it. We have that for Stan Tech and our utility costs as well. Does that answer your question?
Yep, yep. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? David?
Yeah, I do. I have some comments. First off, Justin, thank you for the summary that was here. I think it's fair to say that the questions that you answered were the questions that I had. You referred to, you know, the sheet and I appreciate the fact you addressed those those there. I do want to make a general comment that Lydia made a comment earlier about the responsibility of the school committee when they're analyzing their budget and analyzing their their issues going forward. I think it's incumbent upon me as a member of the board of selectmen and, you know, the other members can choose how they wish to approach these things as well. But when a position is proposed, I think an analysis similar to what we've got now shows some in depth review and shows my constituents that I'm looking at things and reviewing and making sure that that whatever is being proposed is proper for the community going forward. But the bottom line is I appreciate your taking the effort and clearly the the time to answer the questions that I had that I had posed. I do think that the board should have some discussion on long term vision for water going forward. But tonight's not the night for that. And, you know, it's it's a long term discussion because it's a big issue that faces our community. But having said all that, again, thank you for the for the documentation that you proposed. One question that I don't know is addressed in there, and I did not put it in my list of questions. Can you comment on how, if at all, the the indirect costs would be affected? What are there going to be any savings on indirect costs on the budget? And when where would we see them removed from the from the budget relative to what by indirect costs, as you know, I mean, costs that are otherwise borne by members of the of the town hall staff that now will be done by presumably a new position? What savings, if any, are perceived to come from indirect costs as a result of this addition to staff?
Yeah. So that so if you kind of, it it's not in there directly to answer that question, David, but it is kind of in there based off of, I think, one of the questions you had was who's doing these positions and how is it accounted for now? Give me one second.
I guess the simple question is, are there administrative savings? And if they are, what can you demonstrate what those are?
Realistically, what it does is so a lot of the indirect costs, just if everybody doesn't understand. So the indirect costs are the DPW director for one is paid for under under the DPW operating budget, but out of the general tax, not necessarily out of the water and sewer utility enterprise fund. But realistically, the time and effort put in by the director of public works for the utility is bared through the enterprise fund. And it could roughly be somewhere in the range of 10 to 15% per year, depending on the time and effort put in. This also accounts for the treasurer collectors' time put in with the utility for helping set rates, et cetera. The town accountant, clerks, billing processes, et cetera, throughout, because the town as a whole is a small town and we all hold multiple hats. And this utility isn't 100% run like a normal utility where there's dedicated staff fully to this utility. There is shared services between town staff and water and sewer departments that are paid for under the enterprise fund. David, what we're looking to do here is reduce the cost of the consultant fees, not necessarily the indirects, but there will be an indirect cost savings. I think it will be minor at most. But realistically, what we're looking to do here is start to take away the reliance on the consultants. Our consultants are also our engineers. So when we utilize our consultants as consultants doing administration work, they're not doing the engineering work. So I, Armin had a great point in the last discussion with, you know, we want to make sure we're moving in the right direction with infrastructure improvement. Well, realistically, I need to get the engineers to engineer, not consult anymore. I need them to develop the plans in a timelier manner. And I say this with all due respect, but unfortunately, we're not their only client and we're not their biggest client. So priority comes in different ways. And when we use them for consultant services, those tend to take precedence over the engineering services because consultant work, when utilized in our utility, tends to be reactive because we have to answer a question or a directive from DEP and we need to do it immediately without staff in house. That takes precedent, but then they're not doing the engineering work I need to continue to move forward in the background such as well for a, et cetera. So some of the delay is is DEP and and national heritage. But I would also say I guarantee some of the delays are engineering staff, not necessarily putting that as their number one priority. I like to always look at key in house staff as people who care about the community above other things. There's no profit margins here. We, our staff isn't chasing a bigger and better client. We're the client. You're the client. So they put the time and effort in that's needed. And and this is the gaps we're trying to close here. I'm trying to close some of the time lapses it takes to move forward with a lot of the problems and the fixes and the solutions that we have planned for the utility.
Okay, I appreciate that. I truly do that, you know, when when you have somebody who's invested versus somebody who is doing it, for lack of a better word, as a job. Not that our employees aren't doing it as a job, but I think you understand my point. Invested in the community versus just somebody who has a bunch of different clients that they're working for. I get it. But no, I think overall, I think you've addressed the questions that I had. Do I have some, you know, some concerns? Sure. But as with most things in life and in politics, you're not going to get the perfect. What I would like to see over the course of time is some type of a report back as to where we are recognizing savings so that, you know, six months a year from now, we can look back and say, okay, this model worked for this reason. It did not work for this for that reason. So that going forward, we have an idea as to where we might be able to tweak things to find additional cost savings.
David, you read my mind. So you guys, the board doesn't realize that you're going to get an update on the trash stickers in about a month in a memo, which highlights exactly that, the revenues compared to the last several years and the expenditure changes. So that realistically, you know, the residents of this community can understand that sometimes the harsh decisions that have to be made have benefits that others don't necessarily see. And part of the, I would tell you right now that the trash benefits, even though I'm giving away my memo, might be helping offset some of the issues that we already have. The school having to cut 264,000 might have been 350,000 if our trash sticker revenue wasn't where it is now. So realistically, we do do cost analysis over the course of a year and and the board will see that coming up recently with the trash ticker memo and hopefully about a month. I think we put that in motion in September. So I really wanted to give it a year. So probably a month.
Look forward to seeing that. And then I look forward to sharing that with the residents so that they can see that, you know, even though it might have been an unpopular decision for some.
Yeah, absolutely.
Even though it might have been an unpopular decision for some, it helped us in the long run to meet the bigger, the bigger need.
So does anybody else have anything, any other questions for Justin regarding this position? Chris, Jeff? You're good? Jeff, you're good? All right. So I also again want to, I know I said it, but I want to reiterate it. I thank you, Justin, for the time and effort you put into this. It is, it's very impressive and and we appreciate it. So, you know, sometimes it's hard for us to make these decisions. So it helps to have the information in front of us and we appreciate your patience with us for that. So we're going to move to approve the reorganization to add a water superintendent position. Jeff?
Yes.
All right, Arment.
Yeah, you're Justin, you're you're awesome. You make such a convincing, you know, point. And thanks for all your hard work. So I changed my mind to a yes.
Excellent. David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am the yes as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You won't regret it.
Yeah, with your leadership, I don't think so.
Thank you, Armin.
All right. Thank you very much. So now we'll move on to the town administrator report, sir.
I don't think I have a report, actually. That's probably the best report, the best report, the best report we ever gave.
I will, I will, I will remind everybody, I'm not here next week.
And that's the report.
Now then, that's a great.
Be very nice to Megan, please.
Always nice to Megan.
We'll be very nice to Megan.
Yes.
I mean, that's for all the good people of Maynard.
Enjoy your vacation. Enjoy your time off.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I hope everyone has a good week next week.
Be safe.
Thank you. I will.
Yes. And I actually, I don't have, let me think, I don't have anything for the chair report either. So we can move right into board comments. Chris, do you have anything, sir?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Jeff?
This week. Thank you.
All right, Arment?
Good here, too.
All right. And David?
I do have a quick comment. One is the unfortunately, I won't be able to attend, but I know that the ice cream place
Oh, yeah.
Cinema is having its, it's, you know, ribbon cutting. I think Jeff mentioned that last week, too. So
I said it was last week. I was wrong. It's this week.
It's this week.
There was a lot, there was a large crowd there last Friday. Ribbon cutting. But anyway, I have I have some assignments at work that I have to get done. So but I'm off next week vacation wise also. I don't know if we're going anywhere. Somebody might be pushing me. But anyway, so I intend to be here. But if not, I won't, but we'll see. But anyway, good meeting again. I appreciate it all. And Justin, thank you for the the work. Again, I appreciate it.
Excellent. Then I will move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Thank you, Arment. Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Arment?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a S as well. So Greg and David, enjoy your vacations.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
We will, we'll see you next week.
Take care. Have a great evening.
You too.